We've come in with our comments.
Proud, there you are. Great, I will call the meeting to order at 6:33, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Cool call please.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Norby.
Here.
Mayor Muggie.
Here. Get a motion adopt agenda please, some moved, some moved, councilmember Cole, second, second councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, presentation.
All right, well, thank you everyone for having me today, I'm Henry Schneider of Open Window Productions and we had the very fine pleasure of producing a video for the city. There's in fact two videos that we have to share with you guys today, the first one is a full two and a half minute version, well not quite two and a half minutes, close to two and a half minutes, that showcases all that the city has to offer for businesses and for residents alike, and then for the short version it promotes more in a generic sense the city as a whole. So if you like, I can begin with presenting the full version, and is it gonna go on the monitors if I share my, should I share my screens, is that what I have to do? You did, okay. So unfortunately.
The audio. Unfortunately, we don't have our normal system, we're using this temporary still because of air shoes any.
Let me share one more time and check audio sharing.
Okay, this isn't our normal situation.
May not have had audio checked.
Okay.
Well, that sounds like it might be the best that we're gonna get for this right now.
Thriving businesses are a hallmark of society, in the city of North St. Paul is a place where history meets opportunity, right in the heart of the Twin Cities metro. Here, you'll find a supportive local government and a small town feel with big city amenities. North St. Paul has an excellent infrastructure, including easy access to major highways, as well as a variety of commercial properties to suit businesses of all types and sizes. From public transportation, our own private utilities, and outstanding public safety, North St. Paul is built for business.
The city has been fantastic at reaching out and the police force came in, the fire department would come in after the inspections and just shop with their family. And it just felt like we certainly belonged here and they gave a ton of support.
North St. Paul is a city on the rise with a rich history and a promising future.
What I can tell you, having been here for a year now, and then the development process before that, this city gets it. And the town itself, they are really excited to see the revitalization that's taking place, and they're loyal, they wanna see local businesses succeed. North St. Paul is clearly open for business.
But, it's not just about business, it's about community too. North St. Paul is known for its robust community engagement and lively events. From the history cruisers car shows and music in the park to the fall roundup parade, there's always something happening here.
I've been in North St. Paul since 2007, they're doing a lot of stuff, a lot of different things with apartments they're building in downtown, they're fixing the streets, so they're bringing in more people into town. And they've got the car show in every Friday night throughout summer, which is a phenomenal event for everybody to come down and see all the classic cars. And the whole street is, you know, it's got different people serving foods and stuff, so it's like a little great fair every weekend.
It's time to bring your business to North St. Paul and become part of our thriving business community. Contact us today to learn more about the opportunities that await you here.
It's obvious a little audio delay there with the playback, but people who see it through social media, through your email thumbnails, through all the different places that you guys are gonna be able to share it, they'll get the full experience. If there's any questions, I can answer those, or I can move on to the short version of the video as well.
Very good, please continue.
You cut that ribbon very well, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, so this is the short version, thirty second version, so a little bit more shareable.
When was the last time you came to North St. Paul? It's time to rediscover Minnesota's oldest bar. Rediscover the restaurants and the delicious food. Rediscover something sweet. Rediscover the parks, lakes, and trails. Rediscover the events and community. Rediscover North St. Paul.
That one obviously a little bit less focused specifically on business, so it works more universally, something that can go out really for any purpose and really just highlight all that the city has to offer, whether you're trying to promote upcoming events, or do a generic promotion to call up the city, that one should work really well, particularly on digital platforms, but really anywhere. Questions, thoughts, feedback, thanks for letting me have my kids present.
Very good, both of them were.
Thank you.
I like the, you know, right to the point, that'd be good for social media, catches your eye, skateboarders, all the different things we're doing now.
Yep. Awesome, my pleasure, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys have all the files, so you're able to utilize those, and if there's any follow-up questions, we're available to answer anything that you guys need help with.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks guys.
Big game, Joe. Guys. Tough act to follow, just stand.
I brought my son one time for a school project, okay, so, I probably don't need to be sitting up here the whole time, this is really just a brief introduction on the next agenda item, for staff from Mindot, consultants from Mindot, to present to you kind of their interim progress so far on the trunk highway 120 study, which is generally, I'll have more detail, but from, on the south end of the study is highway, or interstate 94, on the north end of the study is interstate 694, right? So it's a lot more than just North St. Paul, but they're going around to all of the cities and providing an update on where they are right now in the process and what's yet to come. And I think there's been some public engagement already, and certainly more to come as well too, but they're going through the process of evaluating different alternatives, kind of, you know, you start with everything on the table and start narrowing it down. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Travis and Ryan from Mindot, I'll let them introduce themselves, we also have Adam Josephson who's from Mindot as well in the audience, if you guys are ready, is technology with us?
We're gonna see. Just a quick note on our side, we're still, don't have our board for our soundboard, so we're up here at the table, it's just our, our media thing there, so everybody can talk loud and we apologize because we're still waiting on parts.
Great, share, alright, to the PowerPoint.
There you go. Alright, well, good evening everybody, I'm Ryan Cottington, I'm a project manager at Mindot, with me tonight is, go ahead Travis.
Travis Weaver, project manager for WSB.
And of course Adam Josephson is the East Area Manager, he's in the audience tonight. So thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, like Morgan kinda stated, it's kind of an interim update, so why don't we go to the next slide there Travis? So just a little bit of background, like Morgan stated, it goes from 94 on the south, all the way up to 694 on the north. Few years ago, we sculpted a project in Mindot to look at the pavement and the aging infrastructure, we quickly realized that there's a lot more to the story than just pavement and signals that is needed out here. And so we started a comprehensive study of the area, and we've been, we've been working on that since 2020, and so we're stepping through the process. So, kinda this is not news to anybody, but this is kind of the existing conditions of 120, it's a two lane roadway with shoulders. Residential and commercial accesses, there's lots of them, and with those businesses and commercial accesses, there's both mail service and garbage service and other things that need to occur on that shoulder, for those, those residents. There's a railroad crossing in the middle, and there's a lot of signalized intersections, lots of schools, very constrained right-of-way, lots of utilities, rural drainage, and a real lack of bike and pedestrian accommodations, and that's kind of what led us to start this study. So some of our stakeholder engagement that's happened to date, and it will continue, so on there, we've talked to Met Transit about the transit service that runs along 120. We have a technical advisory committee meeting that meets once a month, Morgan sits on that for us, and so we, we've been, we've been meeting consistently for a while now. We also have a public officials meeting that meets periodically, and we'll have another one of those coming up, and, oh, I missed one, sorry. We did have a public open house kind of to kick off the second phase of the study, and we'll have more of those coming as well. We've also had a lot of engagement with our internal functional groups, both the geometric office and Mindot Bike and Ped, the ADA office, really trying to gather all that input to further our alternative development. So some of the key takeaways we've heard so far, and a lot of this probably isn't news, but we heard a lot about safety for bikes and pedestrians, people really wanna be able to use the corridor for more than just their cars. There's a lack of sidewalk and trail, so people really don't feel safe as they're walking or navigating that roadway. And then we heard a lot about congestion of the 120 and 36 interchange, which a lot of people, you nod your head, yes, we heard that. And there's a real need for vehicle safety as well, with those signalized intersections, really anticipating where people are coming from, and knowing, knowing where to expect those cars to come out onto 120. Pavement condition is nearing the end of its useful life, and that's what led us to start this endeavor, and accessible improvements are important. Stormwater management is another big, important consideration, cost effectiveness implement, I can't say that, implementable is another important consideration on this study. Really, what's something that we can all shoot for that's manageable, that we can all hopefully deliver and make it a better road for everybody. And then the last one on here is something that the elected officials have brought to our attention, is how do we future-proof, or how do we, we look at the future of this roadway, and as vehicles become connected or automated, is there infrastructure that might need to be implemented to make a smart quarter, kind of for that future vision? So that led us really to Phase 1 of the study, and that, that was not Travis, that was a different consultant, and so that's, this is kind of where we left off. So this was our primary and secondary needs, but really what we, primary needs are things that we really should do, or have to do on the next project, and then secondary needs are more, would be nice to do, or other considerations, that kind of thing, they're gonna kind of fall into secondary category. So our primary needs are vehicle safety, congestion at the highway 120 and 36 interchange, walking and bicycling accommodations, pavement condition are our primary needs. And then our secondary needs are congestion and access at other locations where traffic backs up. With that, I'll turn over Travis.
Sure, so from there, really, you know, we started this study at that point, having the primary, secondary needs, we wanted to look at the whole universe of alternatives. Anything that might be possible along this corridor, what might fit, there were no bad ideas, but it all gets filtered and screened through this lens of the primary and secondary needs. If it doesn't address those, we rule them out, and that's really this first, what we'll be talking about at the Level 1 screening. But even prior to that, one of the things we looked at and talked about in those TAC meetings was the need potentially for a four or five lane section. We wanted to address that right away, and whether or not it would be warranted, if it'd be needed, and what we found through studies, initially we studied the traffic, the demand that's there today, the demand we're expecting in the future for growth, and whether or not we would, we would have that traffic demand to need the capacity of the additional lanes along this corridor. And one of the things we initially found through those traffic studies is that it's not warranted, that we don't expect that traffic growth, it should be very stagnant, it's relation to 694, the fact that this corridor is largely built out, not a lot of high-demand growth that would be coming that might increase this traffic by, you know, thirty, forty percent over the next even thirty years. So, we looked at it through that lens, is there a need for it, and then also looking at the right-of-way impacts, what would that mean? Right now, we've got a very constrained right-of-way, as Ryan talked about, and some of the constraints, we have a five-lane section there with turn lanes, we're talking pedestrian features, you know, it's a hundred-foot footprint, and you look at this entire corridor map, kind of stacked on there, the red sections are areas that would have very significant right-of-way impacts, rows of homes that would need to be bought out, relocated, really not the appetite to go forward with something like that, especially when the demand or need isn't there for something that robust. So, almost in a pre-screening phase, we eliminated the four or five-lane section from further consideration in our Level 1 screening. For the rest of Level 1 screening, as I talked about, kind of the rest of the universe of alternatives, so taking anything, evaluating really the different lane configurations that we could have, and that might be kind of an existing two-lane section, a three-lane section, two-lane divided, signals are roundabouts, and, you know, through the lens again of safety and operations, looking closely at the highway 36 intersection from the operations there, limiting the congestion, and then bike and ped options as well. Again, addressing those primary needs, and that's really what it was, and those were, that's how they were screened, and so, we'll talk about these in a little bit more detail here, once we get kind of through high-level results. So we've completed our Level 1 screening results, we looked at all of these different options, and there was a myriad of them, and really what came out of that, that met the, the primary and secondary needs, were from a typical section or lane configuration standpoint, was a two-lane divided, which would provide a raised median in the middle, and I'll step through these, and a three-lane section as well. At the major intersections that currently have signals, we evaluated if signals still operated effectively or roundabout would operate. And really, those, those were only evaluated again from a traffic and safety standpoint, and what was determined is that both operate effectively. And it's not looking at impacts, we'll look at that further down the road. In the highway 36 intersection, we looked at both grade separated and also at-grade options. So we wanted to make sure that there wasn't some new innovative intersection design that would meet the safety and the traffic needs. And what we found at, looking at probably, I think, eight different at-grade options, modifying, reconfiguring how that would operate, J-turns, different configurations like that, none of those at-grade options would either meet safety needs or the traffic congestion need. So, we're moving forward only with interchanges into the Level 2 screening. And then lastly, the ped and bicycle options, what we found is that, well, we don't expect traffic growth, it's still a large volume of traffic that's out there, like ten thousand vehicles per day that we currently see, so it's not safe at that volume for bicycles to share the roadway in any configuration, whether it's shared, it's bike lanes, or even buffered bike lanes. It's best from a bike standpoint that they're off the road, so moving forward, looking at shared use path, off-street bike lanes, as well as sidewalks for ped and bike options, but not on-street. So, that's how we went through and really completed our Level 1 screening of that, so to take a little bit deeper dive into the alternatives moving forward, I'll start with that three-lane option. And in the upper right, it's probably a little bit tough to see, but you can kind of see the typical section configuration, how this might look, and so it's, it's the three lanes, one lane in each direction, north and south, and then the center-left turn lane, and it also includes shoulders on here. Ryan talked about a lot of access points for residences, for businesses, so garbage, postal services, making sure that there's safe space for that to operate with. We've got boulevards, and then both pedestrian and bicycle facilities, we show a shared use path on one side or another, it really doesn't matter, the footprint would be the same, can be configured a lot of different ways, but just for the sake of illustration, we show it in, in one way. So, this kind of promotes that full access still, that three-lane section would not restrict side streets, driveways to right in, right out, you'd be able to go left, in and out, as we kind of show and illustrate on the bottom left, as, as the layout would dictate. When we look at the two-lane with raised median, it's a little bit differently, here we've got one lane in each direction, and again, we've got the center median, and that promotes a little bit more access control. So we'd have right in, right out at minor side streets, at driveways, and so what it makes up for in probably safety, really there's some access inconvenience. So someone trying to take a left turn out of a side street will have to go, in this case, south, come around, make a U-turn at an intersection, a roundabout, or a signal, then to provide, to go north again. But this would also provide that same shouldering, so that emergency vehicles would be able to pass stopped or stalled vehicles, as well as garbage and postal service as well. Kind of the compare and contrast with our two primary sections that we're showing. Mentioned, along this six-mile corridor, we have fourteen signalized intersections right now that we're evaluating, and that's what we did, at least on a screening operational analysis, just making sure with the traffic volumes, we initially looked at, would a roundabout operate? And that's really all we looked at, further considerations are a little bit more detailed traffic operations, looking at turn lane considerations, the right-of-way constraints, will these different intersections fit, will they modify access, how will they operate with bus, pedestrians, all of those things will be considered as we dig into this further. So, on our options right now, we show roundabouts are possible at every intersection, but, you know, whether the, whether the right-of-way impacts are gonna be acceptable or not, or some of the other operations, that's what we need to dig in further as we move forward into the study. At highway 36, as I mentioned, we're not going with that great anymore, so just looking at the interchange options. So, much more in-depth traffic operations, looking at property impacts, this creates even in a tight, tight area, a pretty large footprint to put an interchange in. So that's gonna be a big consideration, the connection to Margaret Street here, that currently exists, and looking at interchanges that can perpetuate that connection to Margaret Street. We've heard that feedback, the potential impacts and the continuity of the gateway state trail, there's a relatively new bridge, it's only ten years old, so when this gets built, can we preserve that? How can we continue that, what would the interchange do to that? And we gotta evaluate whether 36 would go over or under 120. We've got a very high water table in this area, and the feasibility and constructability of that is in consideration as well. And then the Glenbrook Small Area Plan that is being completed as well, we haven't seen the results of that yet, but if there's gonna be pieces of that that we wanna incorporate or implement as part of the study as well. And so with the interchanges, we're gonna be looking right away, at least initially, at five different configurations, the conventional diamond, you know, diamonds with roundabouts, potential for a single roundabout. You know, other considerations might be a single-point urban, or diverging diamond, but again, access, the size of these, their operations certainly be considered, and those are the things that we'll screen initially before we go into much detailed designs. Again, just kind of giving an overview of the different types of options that, that might be considered. So those were certainly the things that we're screening moving forward as we move forward in the study. And so really, next steps for this study, you know, we're having these series of meetings, so we're gonna meet North St. Paul with Maplewood, with Oakdale, with Washington County, with Ramsey County, with Landfall. So we're gonna meet with the cities and counties, provide this kind of midpoint update, and then come back to the elected officials group, which is, I guess best described as the coalition of the cities and counties, to help kind of propel and move this project forward, give them an update as well, then we'll go back to the public with our Level 1 results, Level 1 screening results, and then more detail on the options going forward, and then complete kind of our screening analysis. We're gonna document the impacts, the issues, the benefits of all those things, hopefully with the outcome of narrowing this down even further, to get something that we can fund, that we can implement to move forward in the next phases of an environmental document, something you can build a design project that we can move forward. So, those are the, certainly the next steps that we'll be looking at probably over the next, I'd say, six to nine months, you know, as this moves forward, I would say Ryan, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. We wanted to provide an update, answer questions today, so that concludes our presentation, but can certainly answer anything you might have.
Thank you very much. So it wasn't anything on, even on the horizon, or anything? So, the only thing new was it was, it was submitted for quarters of commerce, and it was evaluated, it wasn't selected, but it did, it did go through that process. That was pretty much the newest, newest update, anything else that I know of?
Can I make two points of clarification, for council and public's benefit? You asked me to sit up here.
I did.
So, the Glenbrook Small Area Plan that you mentioned, that is being conducted by the city of Oakdale, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yep, so that's an Oakdale effort that's ongoing and will help to inform your efforts in the corridors. And then I just wanted to point out, you know, so you are not at the, the stage yet where you're really kind of determining pedestrian facilities, what side of the road, where exactly you've got kind of these concepts. But I just wanted to make mention for the council's benefit, that, which has been discussed many, many, many times, certainly in the past, that Silver Lake Trail connection along the 120 corridor, in some fashion, you know, that is encompassed with the corridor study. Now, a lot of these concepts, I don't know, you know, we go through them pretty quickly, even at the technical committee level, but they are showing a, an off-road trail, a shared-use trail facility. I mean, right now, I think it's on the opposite side of the road of Silver Lake, and maybe that's okay and best, I think, you know, their efforts, future efforts will help to determine that, and help inform, you know, that component of kind of the overall vision, multimodal vision for the corridor. So I think it's just important for the council to know that a lot of times, city council and city staff talk about the Silver Lake Trail as a standalone item. There is some component for this study which does encompass that kind of non-motorized transportation need in the area, and so, whether it's on one side or the other, I think, you know, the, it'll be good to, again, continue to hear public feedback, continue to see how the Mindot study shakes out, knowing that some version of that, or a vision of that, will be included, even though it may not be called the Silver Lake Trail, but it is in, in what they're looking at, is that accurate representation?
Yes, nope. Absolutely, it's been something that more.
Get that road a little bit farther to the east, so we can have a regular path around the lake, or?
And with, with all these alternatives as well, what we're looking at, they, both those, either the two-lane or the three-lane, almost by happenstance, right now they have the same footprint, from the edge of the shared use path, the edge of the sidewalk, the same width that we're looking at. And because in some areas, we don't have that much right-of-way, we're gonna look at centering the roadway and seeing how the impacts look on, equal on both sides. We're gonna evaluate shifting it to the west, as well as shifting it to the east, and then kind of in a matrix, looking at what those impacts look like. In some, in some segments, as we've. in some segments, as we've broken this up, it might be better and less impactful to shift it, you know, to the west to avoid full property buyouts that might happen on the east, or vice versa. So all of those things, you know, where it's going to fit best, we're going to look at kind of on a segment-by-segment approach. And we've broken that up, you know, through the six miles into 14 different segments, essentially between the signalized intersection and beyond as well. So to really break it down on, on where this best fits, and a lot of that would get determined in further projects and final design and preliminary design that would happen, you know, long beyond this study. But we're going to at least take an initial glance at, at what that is and where it might, just to help inform future environmental studies and, and projects going forward.
Was that February, we had it at the Oakdale Nature Center?
Mm-hmm.
Is there still the same passion for this project? Has it died down? Has it got more? Where are we at as far as the, the, where it's at?
I think there's, there's passion. I think it, it, the study's taken a while, right? You know, it, we kind of did it during COVID for phase one, and that was, that was problematic. But, you know, we made it through that. And so I think it, we've heard very strongly that there's a desire to do something. I think the, the hard part we're going to run into is the funding aspect of it, and trying to find that gap that's going to exist between the MINDOT funding and, and what, what the study determines, right? And so trying to, trying to gather that momentum is going to be the challenge. But the more, the more we talk to people, the more that we've had all these, these engagement efforts, it's really, I really just want to be able to walk, I want to be able to bike, I want to be able to use my street, and I don't want to be scared to come out of my house. And so we've heard that.
MINDOT, right? You're, now, were we on, is this been on the radar, or is this something that hasn't even have a date to even, to look at as far as this project on your guys' side?
As mentioned, I, you know, it's a thing this study's looking at, are improvements for the corridor. To have Brian talk. Something between improving the system.
Is this, was this even on the radar for enhancement as far as MINDOT was looking at? It wasn't. So it's not like we're getting moved up, it's, we're not even on the list yet.
We're trying to determine what the right vision is. And from the community's vision, realizing that there's talks to that, and there's then as a group, the bonding tour.
You guys aren't for it, you said it's just not on the radar yet, is what you're saying. Okay.
You know, most of our program is, with some expansion projects.
That's good to know. So it's not like you guys go out and have a vision of things, it's more along the lines of somebody brings it up in the study and then you, it moves forward. It's not like it's, it's you guys looking it over to decide which one you're going to do a major infrastructure redone, to redo on it.
We know we have to do projects out here. We know that it's out here, a common vision.
That's what you do all the time. It's not like we're asking for something weird.
Some different corridors, you know, like this one, are elevated from that.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of quarters, say like 94. I didn't, yeah, I mean, one area, but the most part, we're just groupers.
Thank you.
For, I happen to live on 120, and my neighbors talk to me. Can you?
Oh, come on.
The biggest question I get is, is what sort of impact can they expect, and where are the best places for them to have voices? So, and how does that process work for those that have property that border 120?
Right. So the, the best place they can have impact is at the public meeting, when we're going to have that, to kind of really, the whole point of the update was to really look at kind of what, what alternatives we're looking at and see if there's something we didn't consider. Hey, guys, I, I don't know if I really agree with what you just said. Okay, then we can go back and reevaluate. And really, to, to kind of bring them up to speed, and then they can share their feedback. We, we go through after the meeting, we summarize the feedback, and we take it real seriously and look at it and see how to incorporate that into the study.
If, is it right-of-way? If right-of-way changes, how does that affect residents? Is that an imminent domain? They have no choice? Is it?
So it, it, all the time, there'd be a municipal consent process that, that takes place. If there is property needs that are needed, there's a process for that. And so then you go through that process. If you settle ahead of time, then there isn't that taking. If, if you do have to go to condemnation, then sometimes that's-
Go to what?
Condemnation. Basically, that's part of what you were, you were getting to. There's a process for that, and the, the property owners are compensated by the law, basically. But so, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a very specific process that, that we follow.
Want to say thank you for putting the energy and time and studying this corridor. It's definitely, and that intersection is, has been really dangerous. So it's been a big concern for us for a while now.
Yeah, thank, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Big part of it is that, that people think it's further along, further along than we are, because everybody's talking about like it's going to, you know, shovels will be next summer or spring.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to get these things going and really getting that common vision is really what we need. And so when we, when we all are talking with the same vision and the, the elected officials are going to that bonding session, and they have that, that shared vision that they're, they're talking about, it's really going to help, hopefully, drive that, that conversation forward.
Yeah. No, and I just want to thank all three of you for coming tonight. It's always a, a topic that's, that's, that's on the mind of, of all the residents. You know, going back to well beyond, well before I was on council, when 36 was originally dropped, the city lost a lot of access points. So 120 and 36 is very valuable to, to the access point for the city. We lost three access points in McKnight, we lost an access point at First. So we want to make sure that, you know, we've got a seat at the table when it comes time to, to talking about what that intersection is going to look like, as it is a core, a core concern for the city. You know, so thank you for, for keeping everything moving forward. I think North St. Paul hosted a meeting almost a year ago now. I think Commissioner Tarowski took, took lead from, from Washington County to, to help facilitate. So, you know, as long, you know, we'll house, you want to have meetings, bring the public, we'd love to, love to house.
Perfect. Yeah, and that, that was the whole intent of that, that Margaret Street connection. We've heard that, that loud and clear. And so that was, I know the Glenbrook Area Plan was with Oakdale, but how does that relate to the, the Margaret Street access? And how do those two line up? And all those considerations moving forward are, are very important, and definitely top of mind for us.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. I think we're going to have to put a camera if they do that big, huge, one round, roundabout.
Oh, I looked at that thing.
Take a look and see how people are going to handle that one. I'm screwed. That looks like it's going to be a, maybe Gary Tween could be right in the middle of it.
There you go.
Way you can swing around, get your order.
It's got to be quicker than the drive-thru.
Up and make it a quick drive-through.
All right. Robert, welcome.
I am.
Here you are.
I don't know if I was summoned or invited myself. Here I am.
Either way, you're, you're more than welcome. All of that.
Great. Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. Robert Doo, Chair of the EDA. Before I get on my spiel, you know, we talked a lot in, in our annual reports in the last couple of years, and we keep an eye on the 120, 36 intersection, because that's access to the city. But just one note on that, and I know we're not going to speed MINDOT up, but we call that area down there Commerce Park. The old BP station that was there, city owns that now. Of course, there's the empty lot owned by a guy named Tom Jelonic, used to be United Rentals or something, I don't know, so, so the circus buildings, I call them, that are up at the Burger King, all of that stuff, the remaining housing behind the senior facility there. None of that, including the bank property, developers, the general consensus out there with the development community is nobody is going to touch that with a tent. So MINDOT declares what's going to happen. So from a EDA's perspective, number one, don't lose access. Pass the ball on that in Margaret. Can't lose it there. And number two, if we can do something with all that dirt, a lot of it's ripe for some. Again, I, I'm not entirely sure, topic to, you know, the intent of what I was supposed to cover tonight. We did have, I certainly relish opportunity to, to address council a little bit with some of what the EDA is doing. Also, you know, we did recently have, at our most recent EDA meeting, we had a stuff where people, I mean, the council for not doing something, and, you know, in hindsight, or with the benefit of hindsight, looking back and, and what's unfolded. I'm not entirely sure that's, that's accurate or correct, but, but it was a driver for me, I think, to come here tonight and, and talk a bit about, you know, what the EDA is doing. I will, I will probably, I, I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of what unfolded specifically with a property that we're trying to do, and kind of how the interchange between EDA and council could be more effective, you know. So my, my hope is that, however I might come across, the intent is how do we, how do we get better at what, what we do collectively within this. And so I, I just saw this as a good opportunity to hit on a few things. You know, one thing, one thing that I uncovered in, in trying to put together some notes is that, and I, I kind of will take a fair amount of responsibility for this, is that when, when the E, the EDA operates as a, as a kind of an ongoing concern, you know, as does the council, but unlike the council, EDA has about more on the EDA since it's, in 2009, and on the predecessor to the EDA for two years prior. So, you know, whereas with the council, and the mayor, I think I've, can't count the number of council members, I think the city manager, just during my tenure at the EDA. And sometimes I think we lose sight of the fact that, you know, we, we do things and operate and to fulfill our duties in a manner based on having the historical information and what have you, but don't realize that there might be a significant information gap in things we know or think we know, and what the council a lot of historical information on activities, things that have been done on some of these. And so one of the things that has become clear to me is that collectively, you know, we need, we need to do better at that. And I, when I say we collectively, but mostly the EDA, in making sure that, that when we're asking council for something, that, you know, we're, we're conscious that you, you guys may not have the historical information that we're making decisions. And I've kind of discovered, even with our, our council representatives, the mayor and council member Cole, you know, we've done some things, or we are discussing things, or moved through things quickly at the table, which might be easy for me, or, you know, and refer along a couple of others that have been there for a long time, because we know all the history. We don't take time to. You know, I, that, that is something that caused a little bit of ruckus at our last meeting, I think. And then, and when I try to digest that, and, you know, how do we, how do we find ourselves in the spot? You know, there, it's clear to me that if collectively we had, could institute some better processes about how we treat the parcels at the city, how we manage them, not only from the standpoint of what do we want to happen with them, but what has happened with them in the and creating a process within the city. I talked to Brian about that yesterday, about creating processes. What does the city council require for, you know, development activities? If, if we can be more forward-thinking about that, I think it will serve, you know, because there'll be a, a point on the continuum, from my perspective, hopefully soon, where I won't be at the table, and it'll be somebody else, and, you know, others will be in your chair, to be able to pass this information on, or have good processes to tell that we've got checks and balances and what's happening. Find ourselves at a point where we have, you know, diverging interests, if you will, be council expects or wants, or desires, or things is happening and what's actually occurring in the EDA. What? Does, does that make some sense to the group, or? Okay. You know, one thing that I, I did want to point out, one thing that, you know, is regardless of what, you know, what goes on and the back and forth, you know, one thing that's abundantly clear to me, and we've always, we being the EDA have always operated in this manner, is that we understand that almost everything we do requires a council approval. You know, the EDA is not running rogue and doing whatever they think is right. We, we've done a lot of work over the years to, you know, create things that help us understand what the vision and, and buy-in from the community. Master Plan probably being a decent and relevant document to help us do that. So we're not trying to do things that are, are at odds. And so, and we've always tried to operate in that manner. And so, and hopefully that anytime there's a, a concern, you know, please understand that, but certainly on us, or however that works, to the council representatives to, when haywire here, need to. The, before I kind of get into some of the, maybe the specifics of the property, which is what caused some of the ruckus. We have the EDA, and I know a couple new council members, so I, I'm not sure how familiar you are, know you, you are with the EDA, what we do, what we're supposed to be doing. There is, and I, it's not my intent to spend the entire evening EDA does. But I did, I did want to kind of summarize a little bit for, for those that are kind of new to it, if you will. And, and what I just gave you, I printed directly just off the city's website, summary of what, what the EDA is charged with, what our powers and duties are, and, and the things that we're supposed to be doing. And for me, the key takeaway of the handout I just gave you is, you know, the purpose of the EDA is to precipitate future development, increase tax base, promote employment, and enhance overall quality of life, and a conscientious and coordinated effort. When you get into the, you know, some of the specifics, when you look under powers and duties, talks about creating and defining economic development districts, negotiating options to purchase, sell lease, acquire rights, easements, reg comment development purposes, or into contracts, as limited partner, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, the, the scope of what we're able to do as an EDA is fairly broad. But again, none of that stuff really happens without the consent and the And, and so where we've gotten, at least recently, have gotten a little sideways on some of this, is myself included, but others on the EDA, at times have felt a little tethered in our ability to execute what we're supposed to be doing. I don't necessarily, I don't blame anybody at this table or, or the EDA table as far as that goes. It's probably just a function of not having, you know, good, good processes in place and, and fitting and doing a few things that I think would, would help that a great. So one of, one of the, I did want to say, you know, as I was looking through this last night, you know, there's, there's little, if anything, that the EDA on this list, in terms of what, what we're supposed to be doing, or should be doing, you know, that we haven't done or aren't doing at this point. I think the only thing I saw on that list is about owning a parking ramp and running a parking ramp or something. We haven't done that yet. We have no parking ramp. Um, oh yeah, may operate and maintain public parking facility, housing facility. That we have not done. But just about everything else on that list, we either do on the regular or, uh, you know, we've done in the past or we are doing. Uh, the video you watched earlier, you know, that was the genesis of that was at the EDA. Paid half of it. Whoever's paying. Um, you know, which is, you know, again, part of the, uh, you know, growing north St. Paul and changing perceptions of, you know, what the city. Um, but as we, you know, we're always open to scrutiny. Uh, certainly, um, things come across your table that, that we may be involved in. Um, you know, one of the, one of the things we do need to, that we prefer and want to avoid if possible is particularly when it comes to dealing with developers is undue. When, um, when we deal with, uh, you know, commercial developers, um, we understand that they don't, the, the pace at which they desire to move and want to move and regularly move squarely at odds with how any government moves. Understand that. Um, and most of them understand that. But, um, for us to be able to, to be effective with, um, you know, developers, particularly out, when I outside developers, when I say outside, outside developers, I'm talking about developers that don't have connections. Number of people in this town, you know, including myself that have some tie here and have developed property in this town are a little bit easier to deal with. They understand. Um, but when we're trying to get big money investment, private money investment from the outside to the north St., to north St. Paul, um, you know, there's just a, a lower level of tolerance and patience for, um, foot dragging as they see it. We need to, we need to find ways to, to act quickly if kinds of, you know, guidelines that we have. Um, the, um, and what, what happened recently is, is we kind of got, we got a little bit sideways on that across the street. I'll talk about that on it. One of the, and one of the spots that we don't, what, what kind of unfolded, uh, the other day is, uh, one of the, one of the spots that we get in is, is that the EDA and its members are trying to execute what they believe their responsibilities are. And, and then when they get throttled or, or feel like, you know, the, you know, we're being held back from executing what we need to execute. And in this case, again, it, it was, at the time, it was a perception of the council. That wasn't, in hindsight, that wasn't the case at all. But, um, that's how it came across. Well, it, it, it's important that we understand that the people on the EDA, you know, tho- those folks are, you know, possess a high level of expertise in a number of areas, you know, development, finance. They're all volunteers. Um, and, and the spot we don't want to find ourselves in is where we've got this, uh, good brain trust down there trying to execute, you know, what they've been asked to execute. I mean, their, you know, personal time, uh, and capital to get that they feel like they're being, really have to be cautious of that, in my opinion, because of that, if, if that kind of vibe is out there, it's going to be very tough to get people to serve. The things that the EDA. Um, the. So, to, to kind of cut to the chase on what happened the other day real quick is, or at our last EDA meeting. The EDA presented a memorandum of understanding for the parcels that are owned by the city across the street. Um, and we, we, we had approved it and we forwarded to council. The reason we forwarded to council, EDA does not control that property. EDA is entitled to some entity within this. So we needed to get the council approval on that, on that document. Um, and we did that as a matter of course, because, uh, you know, technically we have the authority by here, but we don't own the property, so we need to get it to council. A fairly simple document. I don't, I'm not entirely sure what happened. I think it went to a council workshop, uh, maybe the, uh, there wasn't a quorum, there was some discussion about it. And, and then ultimately, I'm going to blame myself because I missed the first EDA meeting in many, many, many months in September. And I came back in October thinking this thing was executed and down the road and it wasn't. And, and, you know, so, um, I was trying to figure out what happened. And, uh, however it got sideways doesn't matter. Um, uh, the, the point being is that if the EDA had the authority to do that, which, which is what you're asking us to do up here at Sine MOU, you know, and, and work on developing property, you, you rely on the EDA to do that. We got to find a way to get the EDA the full authority to do that on the parcels that we, we need to be able to act and we need to be able to possibly. And, uh, uh, the MOU in this case is a, uh, it's a very simple document if you're not familiar with it. It's a document that basically, in the case of the property across the street, it says, Mr. Developer, uh, we will, we will agree that for a period of time, in this case, I think it was three months, um, we will not engage with others in attempting to convey, sell that property or develop it with somebody else. We'll give you the exclusive right to work on it and we won't cut you off from under your feet. In exchange, you will go spend the time, money and resources to put your stuff together and bring it back to us to see if you have some conceptual, usable conceptual plans, finances, et cetera. And then it takes off from there. I mean, that, the EDA needs the ability to do that, quite frankly, on every property that the city owns. Don't kind of tie the EDA's hand. Got to figure out a way to get, um, if that, if that's in fact what you want the EDA. The, um, you know, the, the request, uh, you know, so this request comes back and next thing we hear is that there's, uh, and, and again, I'm not sure the current status of this, it doesn't really matter. But, you know, we're, we're getting appraisals, we're replating the property, we're doing all kinds of things that personally as a developer, construction person, real estate person, heard that we would be doing any of that. Um, there, there's no point in it at this juncture. Um, and, um, and, and so what we've done is effectively slow the process down. When you slow the process down, uh, it becomes problematic. Not, not to do proper due diligence, but when you slow it down, developers get leery, they get itchy, they get scared. Um, why, why does that happen? It happens, it, it can happen for a lot of reasons. Um, you know, one of the, uh, you know, and I've, I've said this in the EDA table quite a bit, uh, you know, indecision in time fills development. Um, and it can be for a lot of reasons. You know, developers oftentimes, um, you know, they, they may have, uh, they may get leery that they're going to get, uh, stuck in some draw-out process with it, not really committed to developing property within their city, have you. Particularly if that happens on the front end, you know, they jump ahead to, okay, what's it going to be like, you know, the memorandum of understanding done, which is a very simple document. What's it going to look like when we get to financing and if, or whatever else might be involved, you know, and replating and blah, blah, blah. Um, and, and they're just like, well, we, we don't have time for that. We need to deploy our money. And a lot of times that's what it is. They have cash and they need to deploy it. Um, and, and we're not talking about, you know, bucks here, we're talking about millions of dollars that developers, when they come in. And we want to capture that as from, you know, as a city if we can. Um, and that doesn't mean that we, you know, accept anything that comes along. That's not what I'm saying. But what we do is we do need the opportunity to play this stuff out. So it's important that we do everything we can, you know, to, uh, be cognizant of that. And I think we need to get to some new processes. And I've got some ideas on that will help us, you know, act more promptly. One of the big issues, um, and, and this is a bit of a history, uh, you know, from my perspective, um, over a decade ago, um, when we finally got the EDA going, one of the first things we did is we number of, you know, you sit around the table, okay, what, yeah, what do we do? So one of the first things we did is like, well, why, why do we have all these empty parcels in here and there's no developers knocking on our door? And every single developer in town is over there in St. Louis Park, you know, building their, everything they can in a new development every single week's going up. You know, what are they doing that we're not doing? You know, outreach. And we found out in fairly short order, um, the development community basically thought we were, we were unfriendly to developers. Um, now, you know, not in a Minnesota nice, unfriendly way. They thought, you know, our, we had no process. We didn't know what we wanted collectively. This, you want that, I want something else. Um, and, and so they just avoided us like the plague because time is money to them. You know, these are commercial business people. Time is money. And, and they just avoided us like the plague. So collectively as a city, uh, the EDA, the staff, planning, uh, the mayor and council at the time, you know, we went through a whole process to say, how do we become more friendly to development? That involved, you know, part of the genesis of, of, uh, getting the EDA to do certain types of activities. Uh, we redid the zoning code. We redid the process of, you know, kind of application planning and site reviews and all this other business. Um, got the word out there and it took a long time. And, and as you can see, you know, if you're around the town, which I think most of you have, well, it's not all of you, the stuff going up here, I mean, that's a re, you know, that's going up now, Lilyville and all the stuff down there, uh, the old anchor block site, all of this stuff is, you know, that's outside money. And the, and, um, that's a result of those efforts of willing to come in here and say, the time was spent or capital here because of investment and it's known process, known out of this form. And so, if we start going backwards in that regard, um, you know, we risk, it, we can regain the unfriendly label a lot quicker than it takes to gain the friendly label. And we just, we just can't let that happen collectively. The, uh, so, so the delay in this MOU, uh, or in this memorandum of understanding that we had across the street, you know, one of, one of the things that was frustrating for me and I, I guess personally, and I think for other members of the EDA, is again, this, this scenario where we have people that have been at the table, they, they, they know just about everything that's happened on that property since we tore the, you know, the acquired it and the Dennis buildings were torn down and, and what it's done since it's sat there for the last 17 years. Um, we know, we, we have all of the detail of the prior, uh, agreements that we've had with developers over there. We've seen what people have tried to do. We know what will work, what don't, what the MOU over to the council, at least, exactly what track it took. Uh, if we don't get it back, we're like, what's going on? What, what? But when you look at it in hindsight again, um, you know, we didn't really equip whoever, you know, received it on this end with all of that information, you know? Here's a concept plan that quite frankly, and that's fine. Um, this is MOU sign it, which, I'm not sure I want to add or whatever. Um, and that, that just puts us in a, in a difficult position, you know, with this developer and potentially, uh, we risk losing that, that opportunity. And we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. So, um, you know, moving forward, what, what do we do? I think the key things for me, uh, from my perspective is that, um, there are some specific tasks I think we can do. Um, you know, one of the things, uh, particular is, um, you know, creating good jackets or good files on every property that we have to get the history. I don't even think we do that now. And if we don't, some of these properties have, have been bought. Um, and, and we should have all that information and have it at hand. And we do go, uh, to try to do something, have it available. Um, moving forward, I think it's important that the EDA has got to commit to communicate more clearly if we have time sensitive. Need to get approval on this. Um, and, and we're going to work hard to do that through staff and. I certainly encourage a deeper engagement between the council and the EDA to help prevent any, um, kind of diverging positions between the EDA and the council regarding our efforts or anything that we're working on. Um, I, I know we, we do issue an annual report as required by our bylaws to the council every year. That, you know, that's a kind of a synopsis of what, you know, has occurred in, in, in recent times and a little bit about what we're working on. But when you only see that once a year, it's hard. I, I cannot, you know, unless you're a council rep to the EDA, I don't know how you could possibly. We should probably find a, a, a different methodology to, to do a more frequent update. Maybe that needs to be some sort of course to keep council members aware of what's out there. So when things hit. I, I talked about control these parcels earlier. Um, I, I don't know what it looks like, to be frank. Uh, I, I do think that if we have, uh, if we have property within the city that is available for development and the property, it needs to be in the control of it. Need to be able to act on stuff and we need to be able to do it, um, you know, without subjectivity to the timelines. And to be clear, nothing's getting built on any property without it hitting your desk. I mean, it's not going to pop up across the street if EDA can. One of the interesting things that we found out as part of this part, as part of this process are things that we should be doing as an EDA. And there was, somebody suggested that we, uh, begin to replat it. Uh, I, I, I think I found out from you, Brian, that those parcels aren't even all owned by the same entity within the city. Sure. Well, if we're prepping a parcel for redevelopment, get them owner, owner of, you know, let's get one owner. So we're not dealing with that at the 11th. And this is the kind of stuff that, or know that, you know, that, you know, Joe Smith, who died 22 years ago, doesn't own some sliver that runs right through the middle of it, right? Um, so there's, there's a lot of things that we can do. I, and again, I think the value, I, I'm not sure who asked me, somebody, Mary, you might have asked me, you know, what's the pitfall of signing control, or maybe it was you, Brian, you know, of these properties to the EDA? I'm not sure I know that answer, um, other than to backstop it by again saying, um, whatever is going to occur on these properties under our bylaws and under the way we operate, kind of hit your desk anyways. We just need to be able to operate a. MOU is a, is just a good example. And that's why keep, but assign it on the spot. Not have to come back. Look, we would be working on something, hopefully spectacular, that we would see next month instead of all down the road. Um, so I, I would encourage the council to, I, I don't know if that's a council activity, a staff activity, EDA is asking for it. Need to find a way to get those properties within our control. It might be as simple as a. Not sure what it looks like, but need to do something to. Would ask, I know that in the consent agenda tonight, there's a couple of items in the consent agenda that I would like, uh, that MOU I'm talking about is in the consent agenda. Um, you know, salvage the opportunity to see what this. Um, and bring it back to you for, you know, have you had executed tonight? Um, the other thing, completely unrelated to anything I've talked about tonight, um, one of the, also remember Cole, Cole and I, uh, tried to throw my own redevelopment master plan in my face about what could and couldn't be done across the street over here. Um, uh, I did never acquiesce, but I'm glad I didn't. I think that there was, uh, before the meeting, I found a loophole. Um, but, um, as I was going through there, I noticed on the consent agenda, we have, uh, an appro, I think it's an approval of a representative. an appro, I think it's an approval of a representation agreement to sell 2579 seven. That's the case that we tried to put green space. I, I'm not really sure how that, how we got to this point with that. But I, I would ask that the council pull that and entertain a discussion with the EDA or let the EDA comment or, or take a position on this because that's city land. And i- if it's city owned land, be developing it, like not selling it. Or more importantly, what we should do, when we did our visioning document, we said, green space. Should be figuring out how to make it green space. But we tried and we didn't get to an agreement on us and. But that's what we said it should be, document says. Why are we now putting it up for sale? I would ask that we revisit that. Last thing we should do is be selling the owned property without taking the time to understand what it does for the city in terms of, and do for the city in element. And a lot of times that might, times particularly that parcel is a good example. As a standalone piece, you say, what do I do with this little thing? Is anything in there? A lot of times it's a, we're going to have to sit on it for a while. We put some grass in there to catch us over a bit longer. To, to get to, to, you know, uh, let it get out of our control for a few bucks. Because we need the money, I would say.
We did bring it up at the EDA when we couldn't decide on it. We thought we'd put it up for sale.
I think, again, I'm going to blame myself. It's the one meeting I didn't make it to in a long, long time, which I think is where that occurred.
And we had the.
I, I clearly, I've, I've learned that I cannot leave you guys.
And we also discussed the snow removal, how it's used as a place. That's where we're talking about paving it. There's just a whole, a whole, uh, on what we were talking about.
Yeah, and I, and again, I'm not sure how it got there, to be honest. I just noticed it in the consent agenda. So, anyway, with that, I know I rambled a bit, but, um, hopefully, hopefully, uh, that's helpful. And, um, I thank you for.
I appreciate you sitting on it. I actually viewed the meeting. I've been viewing the EDA meetings recently just because, again, the MOU for development at the Margaret Street site. Uh, when they came, that gentleman came to propose to us his idea. I mean, it was a little out there, kind of came out of nowhere on my end. Um, that's how I viewed it. So when he came in and presented, I felt like he didn't have the best marketing. How are you going to get, how, what are you doing here and how are you going to promote the?
The concept.
The concept of it, right? So I felt, I wasn't ready to move forward with any of that on my end. I'm speaking on behalf of myself here and not the table. Um, that's where I was at on that piece. I, I do, while viewing that last, um, you guys' meeting, I do personally believe that you have a good point. There's a reason why we elected it, or we elected and created an EDA group. Um, it's for you to, you all to help develop the city. Um, so for example, the MOU that you're asking for and to move forward with makes complete sense to me because you have the EDA. If you're trying to assist with this and it, we're holding things up, it's not fair to you all. Um, and I don't want to rehash that meeting by any means. And it's available to everybody at this table to view online.
Please don't.
Well, I mean, it's, it's there.
It's well worth watching.
It's there and it's, it is what it is at this point. But this led to this discussion, which is important to happen for the council to, um, uh, in regards to, I just want to touch on that site, um, in between Sidewinders. But we'll call it the unofficial parking lot. Uh, I was in favor of putting it up for sale. Uh, but again, you make a valid point. I mean, why would we sell something, uh, to somebody that we don't have control over either? Uh, but much to Tim's, uh, point too, it, it, what, what does our redevelopment plan look like? And if we're putting, if we're looking at the, um, the Margaret Street, uh, facility, does it match? And does, are we following the redevelopment plan that you guys all have? Uh, so I do believe that we are putting the cart before the horse and moving, uh, forward with a lot of things that we're not, we should be doing, we shouldn't be doing. Um, so in regards to MOUs, I, I do stand in favor with what you had indicated with that because that is why we have EDA.
Um, can I, I'd like to maybe speak to one of your points. Um, you know, the, the, you know, there's traditionally a process of when a developer wants to do something. Sometimes it might be EDA driven or staff driven. Uh, sometimes it's developer driven where they want to get, you know, what we'd kind of call a council read. Because everybody knows at the end of the day, things wind up with council and council's got. Um, I concur with you that, um, uh, you know, what was presented, um, the opportunity across the street wasn't the best. But in terms of, you know, just not necessarily how the, uh, I think John Dobbs did it. Yeah, and I, I, I'm not saying about how he presented it or whatever. But one of the, one of the things I first, you know, and he and I have talked about it and he's, uh, conceded to this point. Um, so it, I'm not saying it's for me. One of the first things I said is, well, your rendering looks like a tin shed and there's no way we're putting a tin shed across the street from City Hall. He goes, oh, it's not going to be a tin shed. That's what it looks like. I said, and you're going to have people that look at it and they'll never get it out of their head that it's a tin shed. And, and so, okay, he, he gets that, right? Um, and so, but the process we're getting into is, um, is to provide the opportunity. You know, he's heard that feedback. Okay, this is a development across the street from the city. Needs to have sufficient stature, um, if it's over there. There's a whole bunch of other, uh, information that kind of comes with that development, but we have to get into the process. And I'm not going to spend the evening talking about all the, the nuances of, about those parcels over there and what, what at least I believe can and can't be done and what's. Not likely to be a housing project. Bring over there. Um, and, um, you know, and, and there's a lot going on with the type of project that he's proposing, you know, around the twin. Highly beneficial and fit square in the zone, what we want in this. You know, ultimately the council. Cole pointed out. Starting those. Haven't had the opportunity to fully, uh. You know, that area is listed as prominent based on it being in the downtown district.
Listed as three things. It's listed as multi-use. It's listed as downtown core. And it's listed as transactional trans.
Transition area.
Transition zone, which has zero definition.
Which I love and that's what I'm hanging with half. undefined. But anyway, uh, we'll get there. I, it, you know, some of this stuff just has to play out, right? Um, and, um, I, I think that's important.
I can understand your frustration. Um, I also, I also see. But are you? I mean, in the meeting, it got a little heated. Um, so, um, but I also understand too, some of these buildings downtown, some of us didn't know that candy store was coming in. What a great asset to our community. Um, so how we wrap our head around what comes in down there from a rental standpoint? I don't know, but I'd really like to know how we can because that, there is a fine gentleman that owns that, that has a lot of ideas for the city. And, um, I know not only myself, uh, but I know others too have invited him to go to an EDA meeting because of the ideas that he's done. That's, I mean.
Um, you know, the one thing on the, you know, we talked about, you know, why you don't sell land. Um, just one example of what, what bad could look like. Somebody can come and buy that property and the city that, on a build there is nowhere near what the vision calls for. Nowhere near what anybody at this table might like. Tell them no. We don't want to find ourselves in. No reason to put ourselves in that.
So, self too, just trying to gather the information. Didn't know that was really going on over at Margaret till you brought it up. Didn't know it was, you know, we started in January. You know, I knew there was some talk back, but bang, it really didn't go. I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around that. Also, when it comes to, and I, we agree, we disagree on this, is for myself as appraisals, just kind of understand what we have as a value. We paid 200,000 for one of the lots over there. We paid 175,000 for another lot and there's other four lots. We don't know what, I don't know what they are yet. So.
The great land.
Yep, exactly. So that's where I have to understand as taxpayers, what we have into these things. You know, if we, you know, one comment was we give dirt, you know, or we give tax. Or when I was there that day at the EDA. So I want to.
And that was, yeah, that's fair. But it was a bit flippant, but yes.
Well, but we have to know what we're giving away. So we have to know the value. So to me, it's part of that portfolio we do not have. Here's the lot, here's the dimension, here's who owns it, here's what we paid for it. Here's what appraisal is for it. There's your package. Move on with it from there. That's where I am because right now it's, nobody knows what he's going to pay. Nobody knows what, what it, what it was worth, what we put into it. We have to justify us, you know, if we get elected, have to justify what, you know, where we get this and how we understand. Um, as far as, it doesn't matter, like that one lot over there, 440,000. Well, that wasn't paid for that, but we have to understand what it is now and where we're going to move for that.
Right.
Right. We also have to trust that we put that in the EDA's hands. I mean, we're going, we'll just say, we're going to be done in four years. And they have already been working on something two years prior to us being elected. We have trusts that are revisiting everything. We have trust that they've made the decisions properly and not go back and say, well, we need to do this, this, this and this. So when it comes to the appraisals and things like that, I mean, the fine example is, um, and I think it's a fine example, is the 17th and Delaware land, um, where we got all those proposals. And we came in as new council and we're like, oh, but what if, you know, we have three of these? But now what if we pull back on this and? Right now, we're getting appraisals for it. But now we've held off on three of those developers, even though there was a plan moving forward. Trust to go around. Do you know what I mean? I mean.
Well, we're the ones that people vote to go in and out. So we have to understand what, you know, for me, on the money side of it, to where, where we are with it as far as the appraisal. So that should not be something, that should be something as the city works with the EDA. But we need to have numbers to go off, in my mind.
When, when I was referring earlier to, um, you know, creating some processes. And then I mentioned, you know, we should have a jacket or a file on the property. But why we wouldn't as a city, you know, have a process of maintaining appraised value on the properties that we own? It's kind of silly. Properties, I know what every single one's worth, probably is what I think it's worth. Um, and we should know that. And in fairness, the EDA, the one property we own, I. But that's right here. And if I walk up, I probably know this too. That's not that old. But, you know, why don't we have that on every parcel that we?
That's the question I've been asking.
And, and where's some of the frustration, just to be clear, where's some of the frustration? Uh, is we're in the process of trying to get something done. By me, I'm out, we're going to spend eight weeks getting appraisal to find out. For, in what attitudes we make. That group. I have a plethora of reasons why that, whether it was articulated well or not, why that, those things shouldn't hold up what we're doing. It's not a function of whether they. Or they, they should be. And I think, again, this is in the interest of us getting better at what we do, should collectively do that. And because I would love, I, even for my, when I say mine, EDAs, from, from our own perspective, you know, we have people that come in and out too. Azons or, or members of the EDA. Um, and it would be great to say, okay, hey, somebody's interested in this parcel between Sidewinders and a tattoo shop. And we could open up the file, even if we haven't been there. And we can say, okay, well, we tried to do this back in 2006 and we did this. And what did we pay for it? And blah, 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 blah. And what do we use it for, right? So we have a, I mean, we should have that on. When we, when we're so, in, in a process that council, that me would have, I would think, have approved by council. You know, but a process that says, you know, uh, every five years, we get an updated.
What stopped with the Delaware and the 17th is we're paid 140, 150,000 in 2002. And we're looking at, you know, anywhere from 70 to whatever. So to me, there has to be some justification as far as where we're at with it, what we paid and the value and things like that. Then we could always say, it's for the good, we're going to do this. But I think we have to stand behind it and not, and be able to, to get that. That's where I am with it. Just understanding that there's going to be negotiations. It's not going to be 400,000, that was the appraisal set. We understand, but that's where we go from and work our way in what we paid for it.
This, and this is a, a, this is a spot to me where we can get decidedly better as a city. EDA has, and I'm not saying we don't, but it has a, I'll say a stronger appreciation for the types of things that the council faces with. And. Um, and we don't just send this, hey. We, we were able to come and give you all of that information. And have a, um, you know, we're keeping dockets on all these. Hey, you know, here's the history. Into it, this is what we've tried to do. Yes, we paid 140 and we're able to sell. I don't even, I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with the property, but not the issue. And, you know, yes, we paid 140 and now we have to sell it for half that. Here's why you should do that. Here's why that's a good deal.
And there's some issues with the property.
For you, then you guys don't have to sit up here and rack your brains.
Because there is issues with the property. The super has to be moved. There's costs to develop that and that's understood. Exactly. So that becomes part of the, the appraisal. We know the amount, we know what paid and then we know, okay, we have to take a turn now from there because this needs to be done.
And, and I think, again, I'm just thinking, I love, but in hindsight, you know, from an EDA's perspective, um, human nature, why would we engage on stuff on the? But if the council were to say, EDA, you need to do all this as a matter of. You know. To me, that seems like a.
I agree because that, you know, the due diligence of getting it. And then, like you said, well, it will change. We won't be here, but we, we're the ones that the, the people look at and elect. So we are accountable and that part of that is things keep coming up. We have to understand.
If we continue down the path of developer across the street, I would fully expect to be back. Go to the EDA. Go to the EDA, expect here, I mean, to this group, why it is a good deal.
I, I, I love the idea of a jacket on every property. If I could make that a motion and have that happen, I would. One of the things I'd really like to see in that jacket too, when like the more under, more, the note that you want us to sign.
MOU.
Thank you. Um, i- is expected variance that would have to be approved for the project to go. Um, i- is expected variances that would have to be approved for the project to go forward. One of the things I'm still even unclear about the, the project that's proposed there is, although I, um, i- is whether or not there would be any variances that we'd be required to pass in order for that, um, property to go up there as they're intending. I was under the impression that one of the reasons why it was brought to us in a previous workshop is there were going to be some variances that we would have to approve. Um, so, so things like that in a jacket where we'd like you to sign this, you know, no variances, or this would be the assumed variances that would have to go, um, to make this happen, to me, would be wonderful information for us to have.
The variance issue would come at a much later date, there's a lot of work that needs to get done. Very few properties within the city, particularly in the downtown district, uh, for construction development. Let me, we're all going to have variance. Can't tell you what they are, but that's the work the developer needs to do. And, um. So, but, you, you, you know, I, I do think that, uh, again, getting some of what, as you just described it, you know, us communicating better, that, hey, we want you to approve this. It, it's, it is exactly what I said it is earlier. Allow you to work on this for a period of three or four months, promise not to tell about.
A- and I was more, I know for the variances, to be fair to them. I- i- if, if for the project in its store, they were going to ask for variance to, for it to be eight stories, we could say, you know what, that's going to be a, a, a deal breaker, and we'd rather not have you invest, but.
But that's kind of, that's the kind of stuff that the EDA does all the time. I can't tell you how many developers that I have met with over the years that had ideas of building a RSE within this town. And I don't even need to take it to staff or planning or, or council or anybody. That came and said that, ain't going to happen, right? And it's not me playing king, that's just me knowing that it's not going to happen. We're not going to put an eight-story hotel across the street from City Hall.
Yeah, just, you know, but it's, it's that information sharing, so we're not blindsided on what the expected result and intention would be, would be wonderful.
I like to see that relationship better and talk about it, because I learned a lot at that meeting, even though, you know, it was good, everybody left fine, but it got, you know, it got opinions, and I think we were able to discuss, and think you thought about things, I thought about things, and everybody else at the, the meeting does, because, they said, we're dropped in new, so a lot of this stuff is, we don't know the history. I got a lot of history from emails I've received from people about the property and different things, so it's, it's been, it's a, it's a large learning curve in this town, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, it is, and we, we, we have to do better, right? Because it's easy for me to sit there and say, oh, jeez, some council member wants to put housing or wants to do this over there, and I've been down that path twelve times already. Well, that council member doesn't know I've been down that path twelve times. You know, they don't know that we, we beat our head against the wall. Create a better process for, including a, you know, hey, we signed. Has to do something that. A feedback loop that tells, by the way, we, we played this out, and it doesn't work, and here's one. And that would be good information for them.
Exactly, hundred percent.
I know, I'm getting into, I'm getting into a bit of utopia now, but.
I mean, it's good information.
We can all dream.
Glad you, uh, came up, because I think it was good information to be able to talk over this, because there was questions and just understanding where we should be as far as us having prepared the, you know, a jacket of some kind, you got understanding the past, where we're looking for the future, and, you know, where we're at to start with would be great. I really would think that would work out well for us.
So, did you learn that you can't miss a meeting?
Well. So, I missed one.
Totally joking.
So, I missed one when this was originally presented. The day job got in the way of the city job.
That was intentional.
And I missed the workshop, that was the case.
Okay, this is going to be dicey, and now some of them are cool out here.
So, first off, Robert, I want to thank you for coming. You possess the most institutional knowledge of any of us at the table probably combined. Um, so, sharing that is, I mean, i- it's, it's huge. Um, yes, it was a spirited meeting, it, I think it all, for the most part, ended well. I think there may have been a few bruised people along the way. Um, there were some pretty direct stabs at council. Um, so, I actually had staff with Brian's assistants go back and take a look at, how many things has the EDA brought forward to council? And I came up with over the last five years about ten things. Seven of us, seven of which were passed, hands down, four to one are completely unanimous. Um, two, which is on the same topic, have yet to be resolved, and that's the, the space on Seventh. And the last one is what we're going to talk about tonight, that, you know, for the, for across the street. So, to say that the, the council doesn't support the EDA, um, I think was a bit harsh. Um, I think it was out of line, um, and I don't think it's in the spirit of, of what's here. Uh, Councilmember Wong sat on the planning commission for two years until she moved this year. Um, I've sat on the EDA for two years now, when the seat was vacated by another council member. Um, and the only piece I wanted to bring up during that meeting that I wasn't in attendance at was the city spent three years putting guardrails, um, and a vision together for what downtown would look like. Um, and the only piece that I wanted to bring up was, it doesn't, what's going in, with the exception of the transition zone, which is undefined, it doesn't meet the other two, um, the other two areas that were there, and that's, that doesn't mean for or against, I just wanted to bring to the attention, um, I am aligned with you that the EDA does need wiggle room. They need the opportunity to, 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 to move on their own, to cut some of that time down. Um, you know, I, I completely agree, but I think there needs to be boundaries or guardrails put up along it as well, and if, if we see something skirt in the direction, maybe that's when, you, you know, we bring it to a workshop, we bring it to something, um, to make sure that council is still aligned with it going forward, because, um, it was a tin box of a fuck, six-foot fence put around it, that's what was presented. Um, it's unfortunate, um, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but, um, I fully plan tonight to pull those two items off the consent agenda to have further conversation, um, so they aren't just, you know, so they, they are discussed, and I just want to thank you again for spending all the time and energy to, to bring this group up to speed.
I, I, it, hopefully I was clear, you know, that with the benefit of hindsight, and I, I haven't rewatched the meetings so much. It, um, I, I don't, again, I, I don't think that there, i- i- if people are upset at council. And I don't know that that's really the issue. And, um, but that, that would have been held place for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Read off the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, item A, October third, twenty twenty-three workshop minutes. Item B, October third, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims, three million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents. THA claims of nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and six cents. Item E, twenty-five seventy-nine, Seventh Avenue listing agreement. MF purchased energy saber kit for consulting requirements for twenty twenty-three. MG school resource officer agreement for ISD. MH, the MOU for development at the Margaret Street site. My approval of consent settlement agreement. J, resolution adopting change of workshop meeting time. A declaration surplus for. And, oh, reapproved ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three municipal fee.
Anybody want to pull any?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, if you want to.
Uh, item A, please, the workshop minute.
Mark?
Um, I would like to pull E, the Seventh Avenue listing agreement, and I would also like to pull H, the MOU development for Margaret Street for further conversation.
Will that go down under the A then? Yeah, yep. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, so we go to, uh, meeting open to the public. And I, we have John Schmall.
Do we have to approve the ones we didn't pull first?
Oh, do we have to?
Oh, it probably wouldn't hurt.
All right, we'll do it.
So moved.
So moved, thank you. From Councilor Norby, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Worry about where I was going to put them. Thank you. John? Come on up.
So. You can. Sit closer to the, the mic.
Thank you. That's a pleasure.
It's a pleasure, it's the next year.
Anyway, John Schmall, twenty-seven fifty Chisholm Avenue, North St. Paul. Uh, Mayor Council, uh, it's wonderful, the workshop meeting time is now official. It is no longer out there, you know, somewhere in the Netherlands.
Thank you.
And, uh, it only took a month, uh, probably, uh, a city that isn't extraordinary, it might have taken a year. Anyway.
Working council, yeah, we worked on it.
Uh, I would just like to say that there's, sometimes there's free entertainment, uh, in North St. Paul. I was going to, uh, Cub on Thursday night when it was raining and windy, and, uh, I'm on Ariel, and there's this truck that is coming towards me, I'm headed towards Cub, and there's a engine running on the back of it, and a guy up on top, and whatever, and looked at what's going on, and they're seeding at that time. Evidently, it's a part of the contract, or whatever, to seed the edge of the road, but the edge of the road with the wind, uh, from the sidewalk where they were, uh, blowing that paper mache type stuff with the seeds, uh, there was, uh, leaves along there, so they were doing a good job of seeding the leaves. I don't know if that's a media that, uh, grass feed, uh, really works very well with, but anyway, that's the experience on that. Um, you, Councilmember Norby brought up, uh, about, uh, electric rates, and you discussed a lot about electricity. I got my hands on a, uh, uh, city of St. Paul, like, XL bill, and our rates are seven point three percent higher than XL. And if you want, uh, to see my calculations and the background and data that I used on that, I'll give it to you, but I don't come with things like, uh, Dave Nelson is, and gives you a wad of paper like this that probably is going to be, uh, recycled immediately. Uh, and today, uh, I was walking back from Barks to my house, the auto repair on one twenty, and happened to pass over thirty-six, and my God, the pollution smell. The cars were backed up, so I don't know if doing something to the thirty-six to get cars to move constantly would help out, but, uh, probably would, but it was gagging, the.
The light, at the century, waiting at century?
Yeah, they were waiting at that. It was gagging to walk over that bridge. And so, those people who, uh, in times now who say that their health is affected by roadways, it certainly is, in my estimation, anyway.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right. Hey, buddy. Good? Thank you. All right, we'll close that, and. Off to.
Accepted out of public hearing for special assessment hearing for unpaid bills authorized from the city. See, of North St. Paul certified, County Auditor's Office, all unpaid fees.
Do you want to read that now?
No, we need to open the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Close the public meeting, each public meeting at, uh, eight fourteen, now open it back up.
Open the.
Public here. Do we have to do a vote on that?
No.
Okay, no thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Ah, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember, members. Uh, so, tonight is a public hearing on, uh, special assessment hearing for unpaid, uh, utility bills. Um, on September nineteenth, uh, the city council approved, um, the public hearing, it's been published notice, um, and notices were sent out to all of, uh, parties, um, that have, uh, delay facilities. Um, if it's approved tonight, there's three resolutions that go along with it. Um, kind of just some information, on September nineteenth, there was a little over thirty-two thousand dollars that was outstanding, um, and per tenth, at the time of this publication, the backup material will show you without, uh, interest, which hasn't been to effect yet, was, uh, twenty-nine thousand, and as of, uh, today, it's down to twenty-eight thousand. Um, after the public hearing is done, um, we'll still have thirty days, um, to date, um, November seventeenth. Um, at that time, we will close them, um, we'll get ready to send them to Ramsey County, then they'll end up going. Texas as a. In twenty twenty-four. Um, at that point in time, they will include interest, right now, they're interest-free, uh, for solid waste recycling, it's a six percent interest, and all the others have a ten percent. That, um, and if public has any comments regarding, um, any of this, uh, open it up to.
Are you on what?
Okay. Well, there's three resolutions that need to be passed, um, by the city council, um, therefore, uh, North St. Paul properties, Maplewood properties, and, um, properties that are in North St. Paul, um, but they're built by the city.
Nope.
They were in the packet.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we're going to take a motion on that then?
Can we do it all three in one shot?
Yeah. All right. So moved, Councilmember Swir.
Second.
Second Councilmember, Nicole, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you much.
Aye.
And me.
Don't need three ayes for two.
I, 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 no, you have to close it. Oh, okay, thank you. Back there. I will close. Close the meeting, the, meeting open to the public, I'll close it. I don't have my own thing here anymore.
Go get it.
I just thought of that. All right. So now we got the city business action items, so A is, um, from our, can I start with it? Am I good?
All right. For A, it's at the, at the meeting October third, twenty twenty-three, the city council had a closed session, con- um, conducted, uh, performance evaluation of the city manager. The closed sess- session was conducted pursuant of the Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A.
Thank you. Thank you. We got reports from the city manager. So we have to go down to our A's.
We gotta go through.
Our newsletters. We got our newsletters.
Okay, sorry, A is.
A is done, so now who's B?
No. Well, that's B, you're right, so, uh, workshop minute.
Yeah, so I pulled that, um, just to kind of, uh, clarify what, um, I was trying to say. Um, it's in paragraph two on page two of that document, um, and I, and it's regarding the fines. I wasn't suggesting that we increase fines, I was trying to clarify, um, what the fines were and why they were that way. That would be the only clarification. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need to approve with change made? So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Nicole, Councilmembers Swir, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Item B is twenty-five seventy-nine, Seventh Avenue listing agreement.
Um, I pulled that, um, primarily over the concern that, you know, we addressed with, with, uh, Reverend Do. Just, my concern is if by selling the property, the city would lose control over development of what said property would look like. Um, there's nothing that I can come up with that would stipulate if the property was sold, the timeline in which a developer would build anything, it might sit vacant for, uh, another, you know, extended period of time. So, um, I just wanted to pull it out and say, um, I am not in support. So, um, I just wanted to pull it out and say, um, I am not in support of putting it for sale. I think the time and energy of, of Brandy, getting everything all ready to go, but I think that the property is better served, um, staying under city control, so I will not be in support of, of it moving on tonight.
I also will say that even though I did influence on the appraisal of that piece, after knowing a little bit more about EDA and Robert's, um, on Robert's behalf, I, I also think, I also will not support it because I do believe what he had indicated, I think we should all take our control and EDA's plan on it.
As far as I understand, we'll still, the appraisal, we just won't put it up for sale because we're gonna try to get appraisals for everything, just kind of clarify what you just...
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I, I'll be in favor of that, I am not in favor of selling it.
Okay, that's good.
Maybe I'll... And then if it's voted down, then we will move forward with that decision and... Part of that, just the...
No, appraisal's going forward. Come on up. You got stuck your back anyways, I thought you fell over there for a minute.
The, the motion on the table would be related to whether or not to approve the listing agreement. Questioned.
It's just the listing.
So we are not listing it.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out and offer the vote. Yep, that's the only part we're gonna talk about is not listing it.
Picking up what you're putting down.
Yep, all right. Vote on it, go ahead.
Good, with Brandy at the table, could I ask a question?
Yep.
In your opinion, um, any property that sells on Main Street like that, how, with their current zoning and rules and regulations that we have for Main Street, how divergent could a property truly be?
Divergent.
From the, well, um...
Like in terms of variances?
Well, no, uh, I apologize, I don't, I'm losing his name. Um, Robert was saying that i- if someone bought that property, they could put something on there that is not within the vision of downtown North St. Paul.
Oh, same.
And I was wondering with, with the zoning laws and, and the...
Yeah. Um, as I understand, if the, if council wanted to move forward with the listing agreement, we could have put it out for sale, this is, I'm getting at your question, um, if we had an interested developer or purchaser, we could sign a contingent offer that they have to have a concept that would be approved by council. So I think that is an option if we wanted to try to move forward. Um, if we had somebody interested in selling, or sorry, purchasing and they wanted to build something that was completely in line with zoning, we wouldn't have any recourse. If they needed some kind of variance or a beauty or any other deviation from, from the regulations, then it would have to come through council first.
Thank you for that answer, I appreciate that.
Sure.
I think part of it too, after the meeting, which I thought was very good, having Robert here and just understanding now how they're gonna enhance what we're doing. Right now, it's kind of been just, you're, like he said, just throw it over there, we didn't have any explanation, so now that we're talking like packets and understanding what we have, you know, looking at what we paid, what the value is, um, I would, I'm gonna be voting that, uh, we don't put it up for sale as well.
I could add since, like, uh, that I am fully supportive of having a process established for how to deal with property.
Agreed.
Kind of a, if this, then that situation, so we would receive it as staff potentially as the first stop. Does the concept meet our plans? Does it meet our zoning? Which body does it need to be, uh, reviewed by and kind of have a flow chart that would help us is ask, uh, who needs to review and approve?
You've gone, you've gone through a lot of difference because we don't have a plan, and I know it's been frustrating and it's been difficult to try to get it, so I appreciate all you did, but I think this, it got us to a spot now, we're, we're all on the same page moving forward, so I apologize about what it took us to get here, but I think going forward is gonna be better.
Is there... Asking to...
It was the...
You can vote nay if you're opposed.
Exactly.
Or, or one of you would make a motion to deny.
For vote?
Um, or we make a motion to deny.
But then we vote aye.
Depends on the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion of denying again.
Make motion not selling the property.
Correct. I make a motion of not selling the property.
So if you're not in favor of selling it, it's a yes, if you're, wanna make sure everybody's on the same page. Right, sometimes splits it, so I wanna make sure I'm good.
Thank you.
So your motion again, please say it.
My motion is not sell the property.
Okay. All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, oh, yeah, we'll have to do that.
That's second, yeah, I second it.
Oh, I was just gonna redo.
Oh, oh, my apologies.
Oh, that's fine!
Sorry, I'm just...
You're very quick!
It's going on eight thirty.
Councilmember Swere, move the motion to not sell the property. Do I have a second? Please, second, Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Clear as mud.
Yep, we got her. Long as the Sasha stays good, we don't have to know how it's made.
Ooh.
All right, item D is, uh, MOU for development at Margaret Street.
Um, and I'm pulling that, it was brought to, uh, it was brought to workshop on a night that there were only three of us present, so we did have a quorum. Um, opinion was given and the opinion was not necessarily in favor of the MOU, and I recommended that it come in front of council at a later time when we all had five people here to represent. Um, and again, my primary reason for not being in favor of the MOU has absolutely nothing to do with the developers, nothing to do with the EDA. Uh, I appreciate the fact that, that there are individuals and organizations willing to come invest into North St. Paul. Um, mine was strictly from the standpoint that the city spent three years developing, um, a redevelopment master plan, put in place that, I know you had two years on from planning, I had a year and a half on, um, sitting on the EDA, and it didn't, it didn't match the two criteria that I read. Uh, Robert was wonderful enough to bring it to my attention that on page thirty-seven, uh, it's also listed as a transition zone, which is not defined as to what that development looked like. Um, but the two areas that I brought up during the workshop is it didn't match because it's not, it's, it's defined as core downtown and it's defined as, as mixed use. So I didn't feel that the program, in my opinion, met those two requirements, doesn't mean I'm opposed to it, that just means I would, I will vote a nay, um, moving forward with the MOU, just based, just based on the fact that I feel I need to protect the, the integrity of the documents, um, as well as the vision, the guardrails that, that were set forth. But it has absolutely nothing to do with the developer, nothing to do with the development, um, it just has to do with guardrails that were put in place for future development of the city.
Your thoughts on it?
Yeah, when I look at the, um, master plan to use, Sepulveda was slated to be pedestrian friendly as well, and so to put, um, it just didn't really match, so...
Um, two questions, one, can we vote at workshops?
No.
Okay, I was confused why it was at a workshop.
No, it was a workshop to gain guidance.
Yeah.
Um, to see where, where the alignment was, whether we wanted to move forward with it or not, we cannot vote at a workshop.
Okay. Um, I probab- I'm going to be voting aye, um, for this memorandum, simply be, the main reason being, um, any property owner that wants to put forth, um, the time and effort next to a property, be- because he already owns the property right by it, um, I'd be interested in seeing the vision he can come up with to see if it can become in line with our CIP end. I, I believe this property being next to his own, um, is our best chance of getting it developed.
My, my, mine was what I said in the workshop, is we're taking property from, uh, another spot, so we're gaining the, uh, doubling the, the spot as far as the property, we're gonna be having the sewer and the, in the aerial, which is the easement in the middle of it, um, he has the parking behind it for anybody that's using the, um, that facility, so it does take care of some of the parking issues.
To your point, I'm just wondering maybe for clarification on the MOU, is that if, if we do not sign it or agree or vote yes to it, does that mean that the, um, the, um, individual proposing the business plan cannot? My understanding is it's just... For, for four months or something like that.
Correct, correct, yep, yeah, it's not, correct.
There's nothing that's getting passed, it's just to give them the time to figure out a plan that looks better and to understand what to do.
And the developer can continue to move forward with the development regardless of what the, what the passing or the non-passing of the MOU. Uh, the MOU just says that the city will not move forward in the next, I believe it was three months.
Correct.
Um, with any other developer to develop that property.
Yeah.
So kind of first right of refusal.
Get a plan together that may be more feasible.
I guess where I'm coming out...
I'm trying to wrap my, I'm trying to wrap my head around all of it right now, so...
So right there, we're just saying you have first right, we're always gonna try to, you know, it's not really gonna be marketed to anybody else.
I think aye.
Yep, yep, you have, that's for you to just extend the courtesy of three months to get your plans together and to move forward with what's your, what's your design, whatever else is gonna be, how it's gonna fit in, and that's what Robert says, I'm gonna come back and talk to, you know, once we get that far and say the reason why this should work or it's not gonna work.
Thank you.
Is that, Mike, correct?
Yeah, the MOU doesn't stop them from moving forward, doing whatever they want it to.
Yeah.
The only thing it doesn't, the only thing the MOU does is protects them from somebody else to come in and want to...
Correct.
Um, which I think that if we have a developer that is interested, the city would still hear out the first party while they're listening to the second party.
Ready for a vote? Vote.
So, I don't know why I get my brain wrapped around the...
I'm...
I'm only gonna approve the MOU, okay?
So we are, so we are voting to either, to approve...
Extend it, extend it to them for the three months, the MOU.
Correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, I can go off on it.
So can you re-say that for everybody that's listening?
Sure, where this vote is to approve the MOU for the three or four month timeline for them to get their docu, get their stuff together and put more money into it as far as the design and how it's gonna look and how it's gonna affect the community.
Okay.
So...
So moved, your honor.
So, okay, I'll second. Second, so Norby, Cole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. voting. Okay.
What's the motion?
Okay.
No, no, he seconded it, but he's fake.
Yeah, I can, I can second the motion to keep things moving forward.
Right, gave me pretty good. I thought he switched.
I see the way you're working.
It's portion nine.
So nay is all, Swere and one, correct?
So we're, no MOU, they can...
But that doesn't mean they cannot continue to move forward with what they wanna do.
Right, right.
Good, all right, well, that's done. Thank you, everyone, for that. Anything else? Was, was it, was it, was it that, one more or not? Okay, thank you.
All right, reports from the commanders, uh, in the area. Um, Electric is working on some mapping updates, uh, did he get the poles removed along Sepulveda behind the development at Early Building, um, which they... Things in there. They did get holiday lights that we purchased this year again, so it's the warm white light or the multicolored, uh...
Aye.
The sub maintenance is now finished, the, uh, power transformer, um, and there's called back... Looked good, uh, no leak that we had, but it was minimal and it wasn't... Back to a little bit of, uh, sub improvement. Community developments, looking on their park plan and looking on the inventory parks. Sure, over today, they got the chase conversion for the, um, everything went well.
Good.
Yeah. Works is out, street sweeping, they're working on their second time around the city, uh, supporting that stuff up, um, doing patching and, we're televising.
Done on that channel sixteen, so we can watch it. Might to the community.
Um, and they're winterizing as well, so they'll be closing the Silver Lake bathrooms, um, blowing out sprinklers. The student build help is moving along, they're putting walls up today and within a week or two, they'll have the, uh, gas service put into the house so they can get it, uh, put in for the winter and do their work. Good. Fire department has their fire prevention week, so that was, we'll have the... One up here, uh, November twenty-first, appreciation, yeah, that's awesome. Uh, they had a successful bouya, they sold out, which was nice.
Bushes.
Said they, uh, their new water risk people, week of getting it, so that worked out. And it was good.
They were pretty excited about it.
They were, yep.
Rescue a dog and then a kayaker.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, same incident.
Yeah.
The lady, lady saw, pulled over, grabbed somebody's kayak and went out there and she was...
And tipped over.
Yeah.
Oh, man!
Trying to save the dog.
She got bitten and saved, and she still under it after.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah.
What a woman.
What kind of dog is this?
If she started it...
Clearly a runner.
I believe the name should be Lucky.
Yeah.
Name the boat that.
Have that as the mascot, and they're out there, have the dog in the car.
One more, um, the hometown holiday light contest, uh, creation opens November sixth, uh, closes on December eighth, all residents and businesses, uh, addresses are eligible to participate. North St. Paul Business Association prize cash prizes for the first and second place entries, winners announced at the final council meeting of the year, uh, website for, for the contest here.
All right, reports, city council, commissions and committees, do you want to start?
Uh, sure.
Oh, she's wrecking it all off now.
No.
That's it.
Um, so the Arts and Culture Commission, um, met earlier this month and, um, they were reviewing, um, and just kind of reflecting on the art festival, and, um, there was some discussion about location and potential, um, for maybe downtown at one point. Is that feasible, um, you know? Um, and then, let's see, because that could also draw another business or other people to other business. Um, and then, um, there's been a lot of discussion around the turtles, um, and, um, I just wanted to kind of throw out an idea, um, for you all, um, and get, get, get a little bit of feedback before I take it to the Arts and Culture, but maybe like some sort of turtle campaign, uh, maybe it's, uh, working with youth to kind of put together a turtle campaign or some, um, art piece that, uh...
I think it's awesome.
Just the way to get, you know, kids engaged to, um...
I, I'm confused, um...
Sure.
Are you...
We're not gonna paint the turtles.
Yeah. W- w- where, where they're getting hit by cars? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Was, was, I didn't know if there was like a different turtle thing, I didn't know about.
In station, they're everywhere.
No, they're quick, that's awesome.
Yeah, Washington...
Frogs on my side of town.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Washington County has like a tunnel for, for them to go. Um, so, um, I also wanted to bring up, uh, we had a, uh, young artist, um, with a rock snake, and I think he collected almost like fifty rocks from different people on the and I think collected almost like fifty rocks from different people in the community that painted it and so she had it all outside of her, um, house and, um, they're hoping that, you know, maybe that, um... Well, she also came with the family, um, to present the rock snake and, um, she also made a poem for, for the event. So I would really love to see, uh, if we could bring her in, uh, she's in grade school, so... Um, I just think it was really wonderful community building activity that, um, a young person was able... There and... Were interested in that.
I like the idea of it. I think that'd be great to recognize her. Maybe we can have something like painting of rocks and hiding rocks and the community, which would be really cool. She could host it.
I'm sure she, she is, she's a bright one, she's a leader for sure. Um, and then, let's see, um, phase one point five of the, of the utility box is completed, so, um, there are two new ones up on second, um, and just right around where we, uh, have, we line up for the parade, the, um... So, um, two new ones there and then they'll can... More and more. And then maybe integrating a little bit more, um, for different artists, um, at median, maybe. Um, so just kind of boring that avenue. Um, also the photos on the, um, on the boxes are, uh, a gift from a local artist, so, um, photographer and so, and we're really fortunate to... Photos. And I think that's it. Um, I know that we sold the, uh, uh, snowy, so that's, uh...
Ah, yay!
So, I think that's all I have for now.
Um, for the month of October, there was no planning commission meeting. The next planning commission meeting is coming up on Thursday, November second.
Um, uh, on the tenth, we had a core community center meeting, uh, where we gathered back together to discuss, uh, and recognize the progress or lack thereof that's been moved forward since February. Um, the communication really pretty much stopped, um, after there was, um, funding on both the state and federal level. So, um, the, the primary con, the primary outcome was the core group is looking to meet again, probably in November, um, and develop a presentation to have in front of council, uh, after the first of the year, as soon as we hear of what's going on. Um, there was also conversation brought up that can the community center be open for the walking trail? Can we do some other things over the winter months to allow residents to get, to get in? So, uh, we've got more things to talk about, more dialogue, but, um, you know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg thing right now, what are we gonna do with it? Do we want to market it without the development? Do we want to develop it without, um, you know, the, the, the infrastructure redone? So it was, um, the, the core group and, and WOLD felt that they needed a little more time to, um, to gather their thoughts together and then they planned on presenting to council to bring everybody up to... Uh, EDA met last Tuesday, um, here in council chambers. I think Robert addressed the majority of what was done. It was a highly spirited, fun, um, conversation that took place around multiple topics. Um, Henry was here and presented the, the presentation from open window, which was shared here again as well. Um... The only other thing I've got in my notes is that the facade improvement program for the downtown businesses is still in consideration to move forward. Um, it was a program that the city did away with, uh, several years ago and there's definitely, I think, some need for, for the city to, to, to interact again, so... Um, next EDA meeting is November fourteenth at three o'clock in council chambers.
Thank you.
Did I cover everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Um, I also viewed the arts and culture meeting. It was, I'm making a point to view everyone, just because it gives me an idea of what's happening and engaging a little bit more in arts and culture EDA. Didn't have a chance, I mean, but, um, I will next month 'cause I, I like that. Um, just a reminder to everyone, and I highly encourage it because I don't know too much about it, but I look forward to attending it next Tuesday on the twenty-fourth at seven PM. Norma Worm is presenting at the history, at the history museum regarding the history of the toy, toy shelf. Um, so I don't know too much about it, but last time I saw her, she invited the girls down to, um, take a look at the toys down there. So I'll be bringing the girls to that and we're gonna check that out.
What's that date again?
Uh, Tuesday the twenty-fourth at seven PM.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I know they really appreciate when council goes up and it's fun to see everybody that history, uh, history, uh, committee and group. Uh, Parks and Rec meeting is next Wednesday, uh, the twenty-fifth at six thirty PM in council chambers.
Thank you very much. On my calendar, but I wasn't quick enough. Hold on, we'll get back to it. Alright, general business.
Um, yeah, so I attended the Hangtime Board Shop event on Sunday and it was a skate ride or a ride, um, on skates or skateboard, uh, walking, biking. Um, and it was a loop down downtown, new streets, which was nice.
Cool.
And then, um, we kind of whipped around onto the gateway trail and then back, um... Um, and, uh, the event was for, um, like, just a remembrance for those who have passed due to suicide and so, um, it was really wonderful to have a lot of speakers there, um, people sharing their stories and, um, just really, um, eager to share, um, ways of prevention. Um, they talked about, um, the nine eight eight number, so that's kind of... Decider crisis, so, um, I was really excited to see, um, that they were partnering with NAMI, uh, other gentleman who, um, teaches, teaches to, um, work on emotional, social emotional learning with... So just a lot of cool, different things going on among there, um... Yeah, just really appreciated the community focus that they had and, um, yeah, great owners there. They're trying to...
Uh, just wanted to remind everyone, we have a special meeting on Monday, October twenty-third at five PM.
Uh, I want to shout out to Randy, uh, in Public Works, um, for listing the truck on Unisy bid. Uh, he got like two or three times what the trade-in value is gonna be worth. So, uh, again, I want to commend everybody in the city for what they do to attempt to save and squeeze every nickel and dime to, you know, pro- protect, protect all the residents, so... Uh, big shout out to Randy, I want to, uh, thank the entire fire department for the bougie. Um, phenomenal turnout, it sold out again. Uh, they were gracious enough to let me come hang out on Saturday night with them for a little while, into the, into the wee hours, so, uh, I appreciate them letting me hang out with them as well. Um, and as councilmember Swer brought up, um, both the food shelf and the toy shelf, uh, councilmember Wong and I had the opportunity to tour both last year. It was actually a formalized visit, um, and all the council attended. Um, I would encourage someone to potentially do that again. Um, they're two huge assets to the city and if you haven't been there, uh, it's, it's phenomenal. Um, so I would encourage that we get something on the calendar, um, to, to show up as, even as a, you know, as a council if we can.
I agree.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So there's one thing I did want to ask, um, as far as the community center, are we ready for winter there? I know we had a lot of issues last spring, or, you know, do we have to do something to batten down the hatch? 'Cause I know we can't put money into it because we can't, you know, if something does happen, we can't get it back, so are we...
Those are still tied up.
Same thing with bougie, I was, I was there earlier in the Saturday with the guys. It was a lot of camaraderie, nice to be able to talk to them and it was a, it was a good time. And then, like, Sunday morning, pickup, that's so nice, nine o'clock, grabbed my bougie and it was delicious, so... Thank the fire, fire department for that. Um, they're definitely, uh, definitely a, a very special group and they, they do so much for the community, so I get that. And, um, that's my side, so call for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved, councilmember Cole, Swer, Wong, Norby was too late. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, nice meeting, appreciate it.
Thank you.